Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors September seventh, twenty twenty-two, meeting in order. Mr. Lockwood, would you lead us in invocation and pledge?
Dear Lord, I come to you in Thanksgiving for all of the good things happening in our community. Our schools opening safe, even a new school, racing at Colonial Downs, everything went off without a hitch. Broadband is coming to the county. There's so much good going on in our community. So we ask you to watch over this meeting, Lord. Let us continue to be leaders for our community and do what is best in your eyes.
I move.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
Good evening and welcome, everyone, tonight. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
Ms. Evelyn, I've done no questions, concerns, revisions, deletions. I move that the consent agenda be recorded in the record book as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is there any further discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. The board's gonna have to go into closed session. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Tiller, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one eight point one of the Code of Virginia for discussion concerning the salaries of specific staff members employed with the New Kent County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. The board will be going to closed sessions for a few minutes and we will come back out and continue with the agenda.
Those two things you said for the work session. Yes, I'll get them on. Okay. Yeah, we're getting on the work session. Yeah. I was just sitting here now looking through email and said, oh, I didn't reply to her yet. Oh, my God.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I mean, they're. So, um. 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 And. Um. So. Yeah. Okay. Definitely. Yeah. Uh. Um. Um. Oh, my God. And it's great all the way. Um. 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 I want to. Um. Oh, you just got. Just. Just got mine today. Sure. And this one just take out. Why does that? Yes. Yes. You know, I know that. Um. I think you're. Hi. Texas. Hi. There. So, the twenty dollar. That should be. Do you hear me out here? And then. If this. So. Retailers. You know. How you're local. Profession. We can. Um. Yeah. Stop. For all of this. Yeah. Now, I thought it's. Or that. Yeah. There we go. Here we are. I think this morning. Yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah, because it is. The road. Jolly. So, I drove up there. Up here in Nettie. And then right down. And then went to my dentist, which I just. I helped him later. Then it's. Shopping. Basically. Yeah. Restaurant. It's just. Basin. Cover. So, I got. It was an item. Yeah. Back. Back. So, yeah. Yeah, okay. So, I just went. Like, okay, I'm gonna. Know how to get here now. So, we didn't have to, uh. She's. So. Okay. She was like. Oh, gosh. Oh, oh, good. That's my husband. Judy. Yeah. She. Oh, gosh. So, this. So, we. Oh, yeah. That would. They did. So. So, I. My husband. But. But then he. Took it. It's like. Oh, it's great. As long as you can get in and get out with that. I don't know. With that. Hospital. Probably try that next time. At a pure. Tomorrow. There's. Whole place. So. We end it. And that's. We had. And we were certainly. Yeah. Okay. It's getting there. Let me. But. You know, I always stop. Try to. You know. Try to. Play your. Well, all of that. Versus. It's. Oh, yeah. And it really was. For. So. It's all. You're good. Yeah. Yeah. Delicious. Some sort. I need a harder. Yeah. It's like. Who's out here? Could be a business out there. See. Sure. Be a. Just. Make sure. So. Good. Good job, Mike. Um. I'm. Then. Then. They. You. I say. There's something. Then. That's. Get on. I'm. Um. Well, just. Whatever. Okay. Do you have a? Start with that. We. Um. The. This is. One. The. You. What? How. We. Uh. Oh. Um. The. Did I? Back. Yeah. We didn't. The. I still. Um. It. This. Man, come here. Okay. Okay. You know. You got.
Motion to come back into open session.
You want me to call?
Sorry, you pulled them.
Mr. Steers.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page. And Mr. Evelyn.
Thank you.
(laughing).
Now. About roll call.
What do you have to do?
Hmm. Can I make the motion? Okay. Okay. Gotcha. That was a waste of time.
It's.
I have gone back for another piece of that hand. I have gone back for another piece of that hand. Really did like that. Um, motion for certification?
And, thank you, Mr. Chair. That certification would be a certification that only the matters identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be a discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act was heard discussed or considered. Ms. Watkins?
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Okay, we're back. Um, next on the agenda is small business close-up.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller, members of the board. Matthew Smolink, your Director of Economic Development. Sometimes, uh, you never know who's gonna walk in your front door and sometimes timing is everything. So, nine thirty this morning, I had a lady over my left shoulder here walking in my office says, "I'd like to talk to somebody about my small business. How can I, you know, what can I do to promote it?" So, my response was, "What are you doing at six o'clock tonight?" So, Kathy Johnson, Kathy Conkers Clutter, a newer resident, um, to, uh, to New Kent County, had a business in Texas, and she brought it here. I want to introduce her to, uh, help promote her business. So, come on up.
Hi. I've never been here before and I don't know what to do, so I think I'm supposed to just talk for a couple of minutes. Is that about right? Okay, I can do that. Okay, can you hear me okay? All right, thank you. Uh, as Matthew said, I just was looking to get my name out there a little bit, and here I am, a few hours later, a little freaked out, but ready to, uh, to do just that. Um, my name is Kathy Johnson, and I started an organizing business in two thousand thirteen after watching the Hoarders TV show on A and E. Don't know if you've ever seen that, but I'm the only person I know who's ever said, "God, I want to be in that." "I want to get in there and I want to help those people, but not the way they're doing it on TV." It was very exploitive and, "Let's invite all your friends and family," which is the wrong thing to do if you don't want to increase stress. So, I decided to do that because I would find myself at parties, uh, going through people's pantries and rearranging their medicine cabinets. So, I decided when I got a divorce, uh, a few years ago, that I needed to do something I was good at, and so I thought I would just do that, um, um, for a living. So, um, so anyway, so when I, uh, when I work with clients, I like to work with people who are, uh, s- very, very overwhelmed. Um, that they may have ADHD or hoarding or bipolar, depression, going through really tough life circumstances, something like that. That's the kind of person that I really want to work with. Uh, neurodiverse populations, uh, as well. My son has Asperger's and ADHD, which got me into working with, um, people on the spectrum as well as, uh, other neurod- ner- un- atypical neuro functioning. Um, and so when I moved here, uh, in, we left Houston in, on Thanksgiving Day and landed in New Kent, um, on, uh, in, in the February. We were in Midlothian for a few months, but we found a place here that we liked, and so we landed here, and so now I'm just trying to get myself set up here. And I've got quite a few clients going, but I would love to be, um, better known and, um, available to any of your wonderful people here in New Kent or anywhere within the general Richmond area. Um, anybody that I could help out and, uh, make their life a little better, make them feel a little bit stronger and definitely live in a cleaner environment. So, what I like to say is, if your mess has you stressed, remember Kathy Conkers Clutter. Kathy Johnson, thank you.
So, you're Bill Baltimore? Actually, I am. I'll give you the number.
You weren't gonna invite her to my house, were you?
Uh, ooh, next on the agenda is the citizens' comment period. One person. Uh, I'll ask you, I'll call your name, ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and Ms. Wat- Watkins will be so kind to tell me for about three minutes. So, uh, Blake Cox?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name's Blake Cox. Um, I'm one of the founders of a new nonprofit organization called Energy Right. I founded Energy Right to encourage and educate around energy developed the right way on the local level with a focus on property rights and conservative ideals, including all of the above energy strategy. We want to ensure there's a common sense voice at the local level when energy discussions take place. So, first I'd like to start off and commend you for taking the time to get an ordinance in place on solar. Uh, so landowners may move forward with these projects, uh, your ordinance incorporates setbacks, preservation of growth areas, decommissioning rules, all hallmarks of good policy. Uh, the ordinance you've all put together is a huge win for the property rights of landowners while also addressing the concerns of your community. And when, and when we have these discussions about the use of private land, the respect for landowners' rights must be at the forefront of this discussion. But really, I want to focus my, my remarks tonight on the economics of bringing a solar project to New Kent because of the profound community benefits associated with solar projects. The county has the potential to tax land used with solar up to ten or more times what land outside of a solar project can be taxed. That will benefit every resident of the county. This additional tax revenue causes no strain on public dis- on public services like other types of d- development does demand. Uh, these tax dollars can help lower taxes on citizens or go to repairing roads, infrastructure, funding our schools or our first responders. But not only can these, uh, projects be a big boost to your local tax base, but also a huge benefit for your local businesses. From a lawn care business to your local hardware store to even a food truck, so many local businesses stand to gain from these projects. And these projects can also be a big attraction for large companies like data centers, like Microsoft or Amazon. Um, so passing smart and responsible solar project doesn't just mean one person is benefiting. From the county government to citizens to local and big business, they all stand to benefit from seeing solar projects done the right way. So, I would urge you to move forward in the consideration and approval of solar developments here in the county so landowners may move forward with these projects and the benefits of energy development may be fully realized by the county. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda? Next on the agenda is the residency administrator's report. Mr. Nguyen?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Marshall Nguyen with, uh, VDOT. Uh, this past month, we had sixty-four work orders, completed a hundred and fourteen, had, uh, seven call-outs over the month. Completed third cycle of primary mo- mo, other than one fifty-five where the project is, that will be done after the project is completed. Uh, the second cycle of secondary mo will start on Monday, uh, the twelfth, next week. Uh, been pothole patching, uh, asphalt repairs, machining on hard surface roads, uh, shoulder repair, pipe cleaning and installation. We just installed a pipe across Route sixty, eastbound, uh, just west of Atkins Road. That, that pipe was failing and, and we installed that a couple of weeks ago. Doing a litter pickup and ditching, uh, normal maintenance items throughout the, uh, quarter. Other than that, I don't have anything else at this time. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Um, Mr. Steers, do you have anything for?
Uh, yeah, thanks for fixing that pipe that we talked about last time. The only question I have, and you may not can answer it, is, uh, on one fifty-five, where they just widened the road, cut trees, are they planning on adding any new, uh, rails?
Uh, as a matter of fact, they started, uh, installing some rail today, cut a Cox line.
Oh, that's why I couldn't have internet.
Exactly.
And all my neighbors are complaining why we just signed a contract with Congress.
Misutility didn't mark this line, and when they were driving a post, they cut a line. And from, from what I understand, ten thousand people are without
Right.
that phone, internet, huh?
Wow, must've been a main line.
They were, they were out there this afternoon. I went by there. It's right at the interchange at sixty-four, at one fifty-five. That's where they're working at. No wonder. So, now you know.
Now, the, uh, there was a place where Jasmine Plantation is. Do you know where that is, down there on one fifty-five going south? Where they left the big trees there that they didn't cut down. Anyway, since they came in there and dug up the side of the road and everything, there's a huge drop-off. I mean, five or six feet at the edge of the road. And there was no railing there before, but I didn't know if they're planning on putting railing there now.
I'd have to check that.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lockwood?
Mr. Nguyen, I was kind of hoping we'd never be talking about God's Pond again, but, uh, we did speak earlier, um, the folks that own the property, where the repairs were done, were, are not happy at all about the, the forty-ton rating on that little dam. And, uh, I got a call from another one of them today, and I'm wondering if you've had any progress or if there's somebody that we need to be speaking to on their behalf because I, I, I am in agreement with them. Forty tons is inviting tractor-trailers on a bridge that, you know, was designed for a horse and buggy. And, um, it went from a four-ton rating before the repairs were done
Right.
to a forty-ton. I mean, ten times what it was prior to. It had never been rated before. So, I'm just wondering, what is the process for us to appeal that rating? Uh, what, what power does the landowner whose surface of the road you're using?
A, a little history about this thing.
Okay.
Um, the bridge itself, prior to it being rated at four tons, was unrestricted. The reason it was brought to a four-ton bridge was there was a hole in the deck, and they put a steel plate on it. And they designed the deck and everything, and they came back and did a, you know, analysis of what would happen out there. I, I'd have to get with the bridge office to find out anything that we can do. I don't know if there's anything we can do. I'm not, not on my side, anyway.
Right.
The, the, those are the folks that rate the bridge, not me, but...
Because I think part of the problem is we're looking at two different things. We're looking at the dam and we're looking at the bridge. The bridge is, what, eight feet wide?
Probably, yeah.
So, you know, the, the part that was repaired, you know, fixed a small part of it, that is actually the dam that is being used to support the road.
Right.
And that is the real concern because there has been some issues in the past with the dam. And now to have a, a rating of forty thousand pounds or forty tons
Right.
you know, is, is just beyond the pale. Uh, and, and my concern is that, you know, if we keep it kind of in the range of ten tons, we don't have to worry about it for another hundred years. We keep running tractor-trai- and, and trust me, they do run through there with tractor-trailers, so, um...
And they probably would with the ten-ton weight limit, too.
Well, you know, at least then, you know, there's an, uh, opportunity for enforcement, but, so...
The only thing I can do is get with Bridge Office, Mr. Lockwood.
Okay.
I'll get with you. Maybe we can get the parties together and have a discussion about it.
That would be good. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Page?
I know, yeah, I knew you were gonna fall out. It's okay.
Ms. Watkins, would you please make a note in the minutes? Uh, I just have, not, not really a concern, a question, and Joe may be able to answer this for me. I, yes, Sheriff McLockland. Um, someone had complained to me about the school lights on Quaker Road. Did you say the trees were going to be cut back? Is that something that y'all are gonna do?
Yeah, we, we, uh, marked, I think, it's six or seven trees that will be taken down.
Okay.
The area headquarters went in there and, and cut back the brush with a boom axe.
Okay.
And that, those four, those six or seven trees are gonna be tasked out. As soon as I find out when they're gonna be cut, I will let Mr. Hathaway know so he can pass it on to y'all.
Okay. And, and one other thing, and I'd ask, after they finish the project on Bottoms Bridge on the westbound side of sixty, I'd ask about the stop bars, like at the end of Longview Brook, and place the white stop bars.
Right, yeah.
Are they gonna, because they still haven't done anything with those.
Okay, they might not, might, it might not have been in that contract, but I can get with their payment, uh, marketing crew to look at those areas.
Somebody the other day in front of me just, we were coming down Longview when they got down to the, I, I guess, I've lived there forever. It seems like I know. But somebody that may be cutting through the first or second time
Right.
they can roll right out into sixty before they even know it because they have nothing to go by to stop it.
I got you.
I mean, they see the sign, but the sign's way back here.
Understand.
Okay, that's, that was the only thing.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
All righty. All righty, next on the agenda, presentations, item one. Thrive Virginia Community Action Agency update and presentation of proclamation recognizing October twenty twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in New Kent. Thrive Virginia Education Specialist Carmina Galvez and clinician and health and well-being specialist Carolyn Brink.
Hello, good evening. Uh, my colleague apologizes for not being here today. Uh, she just wasn't able to make it. Um, but thank you for delivering the proclamation, for your support with Thrive Virginia, and for the work that we do. My name is Carmina Galvez, and I'm here to speak to you for a few minutes about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thrive Virginia is a community action agency dedicated to fighting poverty, and as such, our work involves supporting survivors of domestic violence. Here are current U.S. National Domestic Violence Statistics. On average, nearly twenty people per minute, per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than ten million women and men. One in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. One in seven and one in twenty-five men have been injured by an intimate partner. One in ten women have been raped by an intimate partner, and data is unavailable on male victims, but we know that it does exist. On a typical day, there are more than twenty thousand phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. The presence of gun, of a gun in domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by five hundred percent, and intimate partner violence accounts for fifteen percent of all violent crimes. Those numbers are shocking, but what does this mean for the communities that Thrive Virginia serves? According to the twenty twenty-one census date, uh, the population of New Kent County is approximately twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven individuals. Forty-eight point five percent of those women, of those are women, and fifty-one point five percent are men. If national data can be applied to New Kent County, that means that there are approximately eleven thousand five hundred ninety women in the county. Therefore, if one in three of these, of those are physically abused, that means that there are three thousand eight hundred sixty-three women who experienced domestic violence in twenty twenty-one in this county. Note that in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, Thrive Virginia's counseling and advocacy program served more than two hundred twenty individuals that have been affected by domestic violence. Twenty-eight of those clients faced homelessness as a result of that violence, twenty-seven received financial assistance, fifty-eight were provided crisis intervention services, forty-seven were provided court advocacy services, and eighteen were provided employment services. Unfortunately for these numbers, we know that we aren't nearly reaching enough people with our services, and we want to continue to raise awareness for all those who need our help and know where to turn. So, we are trying to spread awareness during October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in this month, Thrive Virginia staff will promote our hashtag ThisIsDV campaign by placing posters with powerful quotes around the community to highlight various overshadowed power and control methods outside of physical violence, such as financial, psychological, and emotional abuse. Along with that, we will also host our Healthy Families Self-Care Event, designed for families to focus on their mental and physical well-being. Self-care options such as yoga and massages will be offered. Additionally, we'll have door prizes and resource boards available with self-care tips, local resources for mental and physical health, and staff members present to answer any questions. There will also be fun outdoor games offered and face painting so that the whole family can feel cared for and enjoy themselves. In addition to these, Thrive Virginia staff are working with allied professionals in the development and promotion of the following events. New Kent National Night Out, and, um, hoping to ca- collaborate with Central High School's, um, sport to, you know... to, you know, wear purple socks, um, in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, thank you guys so much for your time and attention this evening, and I look forward to seeing you guys at the following events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda.
Yes?
Uh, we do have a proclamation.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Uh, this is a proclamation recognizing October twenty twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in New Kent County. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore be proclaimed that on this seventh day of September twenty twenty-two, the New Kent County Board of Supervisors does proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness, Awareness Month, and encourages the citizens of New Kent County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Signed by Rodney Hathaway, Clerk of the Board, and Thomas Evelyn, Chair of the Board. And thank you very much for Thrive and what you do for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Uh, item two on the agenda, request for exception to section ninety-one dash one twenty-six, six of the New Kent County subdivision ordinance to waive the provision specifying the construction of a deeded fifty-foot right-of-way built to public standards for a family subdivision. Resolution R dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two, Principal Planner Kelly Laduke and Mr. Danny Hugley. Thank you. Ms. Laduke?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Um, tonight you will consider an exception request, Mr. Tiller just read it, but I'll read it again, from section ninety-one dash one twenty-six, six of the subdivision ordinance, to waive the requirements specifying the construction of a new permanent deeded fifty-foot right-of-way built to public standards for the Hugley family subdivision. In twenty sixteen, the board adopted ordinance O dash sixteen dash sixteen, which allows for such exceptions. The proposed family subdivision plot in your packet and before you tonight shows two proposed entrances for the new lots to be created onto Marine Corps Drive. Mr. Hugley has spoken with the other property owner along Marine Corps Drive further to the north, and he's already begun the process of working with VDOT to identify where the driveways should be placed, given the topographic lay of the land and the environmental constraints on the property. You can see there's an RPA wetland running right through the middle of the property. The Planning Commission considered this waiver request at their meeting on August fifteenth and voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to the board, and resolution R dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two is in your packet for consideration. Mr. Hugley is here tonight. Um, would you like to say a few words? Or answer questions?
Good evening. Yes, um, my wife and I would like to give our kids a piece of property to get started in life. And, um, uh, like, uh, on that plot there, uh, that's on the opposite side from where we live at, but, um, it was ideal, that's kind of was our plan when we bought the property, hopefully to give them, uh, both a lot there, but, excuse me, when our surveyor, uh, laid the lot out, and, um, we had some sites per, it, it, um, we had, we ran across a problem. We were gonna use this at one entrance, one that's already established. But when you, if you're back against the interstate and you're, or against Marine Corps Drive, looking at the lot to the left-hand side is a ravine, and it's got a thirty-six, about a thirty-six inch galvanized drainpipe runoff from the interstate. So, um, after looking at that with the, with the surveyor, and I said, well, we decided it'd be, it'd be better interest for our children to, to have a, another entrance if the county will allow us. And, um, that way we would not have to take it and cross that bottom with a driveway. And I, I looked at it both ways, kind of economically, and, uh, if we cross that bottom, the, I reached out to Solar Horizons, and for the, um, the assessment and the flag, the RPA and all that, and plus the, uh, and it's a permit involved, we're looking around three thousand six hundred dollars for them, and then you still have to cross that bottom. Versus the other side, if we use a, a proposed entrance for the other lot, that, on the north side, I re- reached out to a, a company in Williamsburg, a civil engineer, because VDOT requires to have a design, that they have to okay it. And, um, and that's what, and the price of it was, um, between three thousand, thirty-seven hundred bucks for them to do a design, so it, it was, but if I go on the, with the, on the north side with the new entrance, my land, my, my neighbor, uh, Paul Clark, he said, Danny, if all possible, you want a straight entrance, if you can. So when you bring cement trucks in, Marshall Home in, it'll make it a whole lot easier to build and put a house there, so, uh, that's why, that's how we got to this point here, and that's why we hope you guys will consider allowing us to have a, another entrance on the north side. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
And is VDOT signed off on this?
VDOT has got, signed off. I didn't wanna put any, any more money in it until the, at the county will allow us to do that. I met, I, I met with VDOT on the site, Cody was, was a gentleman's first name, and, uh, um, he went back and, and talked with the engineer at, I think it's in Ashland somewhere, I think that's where they came out of. And they said that we, we would just have to have a design by civil engineer, because what we have to do is shorten the guardrail up there.
Yeah, I see that.
That's that entrance, and, um, that's, that was the biggie right there, shortening that guardrail. And we had, whatever this civil engineer designs, they'll have to approve it, and then it, once it's, once it's approved, they had no, verbally, they had no problem with that.
Anybody else? Mr. Lockwood? Ms. Page? Any other discussion? Would consider a motion?
I do have one.
All right.
So, how many times has this been divided?
We, we bought that lot and divided it. The, if you're looking, if you're looking in the bottom right-hand corner, that was the old farmhouse there. And we subdivided that farmhouse to a separate lot, where my wife owns that. And then, so we could put our house behind it, and so it's been divided twice.
And you want to divide it two more times?
Yes, that was only for, other end one for each child, have a son or a daughter.
Well, basically, Kelly, would that be just one more process? Not two more processes, correct? Okay, so, divided it when you bought it, now you want to divide it one more time?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, the nineteen acres, um, that they're proposing to keep is the large piece where Mr. and Mrs. Hugley live on the right. And then across the RPA, the two new proposed lots that are shown would be the ones for the children.
If I may, uh, is, isn't Marine Corps Drive a, a dead-end route?
Yes, sir.
So those two have, have one driveway coming out on Good Hope.
So both of these entrances that we're talking about are gonna be coming off of Marine Corps Drive?
Yes, sir.
I personally don't have a problem with it. I'm all about keeping family together.
Ms. Steers?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, if there's no more, no more discussion, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve resolution R dash two-nine dash two-two.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, item three. Got the whole department here. Pickleball courts at Pinefort Park, Assistant Parks Recreation Director Jason Baldwin.
Good evening, uh, board members and staff. Um, we are just here following up on the discussions that we had, uh, for the construction of pickleball courts at Pinefort Park. Our department reached out to other localities in the surrounding area, um, as we were asked to. Um, we reached out to Chesapeake County, Henrico, Jame City, uh, many of the areas that already have exist- existing pickleball courts. Uh, based on the undersea standards, um, the other locales, localities consistently stated that they use Tennis Courts Incorporated, uh, and they highly recommended them. Uh, the, uh, as you can see on, on the monitors there, probably in front of you, um, that is a pro- proposed location, we would be, uh, which would be right next to the dog park that's currently at Pinefort Park. Um, and I believe, uh, uh, you have a handout that gives a really good description and kind of a sketch of how the, uh, uh, courts would actually be laid out. Um, so board members, you have a motion in front of you, uh, to allocate funding for the new construction of the courts. Um, and I am more than happy to answer any kind of questions that you, uh, that you have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Baldwin. Any, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Vice Chair, I have a question. So this over by the dog park, is it in fr- is it in front of the dog park or between the dog park and the walking trail?
The, the walking trail, if you kind of look to the top right, that's where the walking trail is. And so it's behind the walking trail. It's, it's adjacent, about twenty foot off of the side of the dog park.
It's down there where you got the two little.
You, you want, you want me to come point?
The two little white squares at the bottom right-hand corner?
Hmm.
Is that it?
Two little white squares.
It's a little white right thing, I'm sorry.
And, and.
It kind of look like this.
This, this is the walking trail.
Hmm.
Right here. This is the dog park. So.
So why would we want it that close to the dog park?
This was a proposed, this was a proposed location, uh, in the original site plan that we had.
It's that location, and then that other open area was either, uh, proposed for basketball courts or tennis courts, and we're opting right now to, uh, provide pickleball courts.
So where we go with the basketball court?
Um, to the, kind of to the left of that is another open area that would have a future, um, spot to put a basketball court there.
So eventually, when we do lighting, the lighting will cover all three of those or close to it?
Currently, we do not have anything proposed for lighting pickleball courts or basketball courts. In the original site plan, the only thing that we have right now is to light all, all the athletic fields in the street lighting.
Okay.
That, that would be a separate project that we would have to look into for you.
Okay.
So, the light would be on the baseball fields, and then the other, the football and soccer? Is that what those are?
Yes, those are the, uh, two fields, um, larger fields are soccer multi-use. The other one is football, but we also use it for soccer. Currently, um, the baseball fields are the only ones that have existing conduit that was run for future lighting. So that was, that would probably be kind of the first phase that we would go with. And then, because I believe the, it had a lot to do with Dominion Power and how much, uh, the type of power and how many meters and things we had to be able to support the entire project.
Anybody else have? Anybody else have any questions for, um, Mr. Baldwin?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion to approve the construction of pickleball courts at Pinefort Park and appropriate, um, not to exceed one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the Colonial Downs Restricted Capital Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
All righty, next on the agenda, we're going to a public hearings. Yeah. Uh, first public hearing, uh, CUP oh-five dash twenty-two, New Kent Solar, Kayden Interjects, New Kent LLC, applicant SPF Investments Property Owners have applied for a conditional use permit to construct a twenty-megawatt solar facility, resolution R dash twenty-four dash twenty-two. Ms. Oh. I thought I had Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board. Uh, the applicant has requested that that application be conferred to a later date, which would also impact item number five on the agenda. Those two items go hand in hand, um, and the applicant has requested a deferral of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. We just made up some time. Uh, next on the agenda then, item six, public hearing, R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two, Stage Road Through Truck Restriction, County Administrator Rodney Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, before you is resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two, uh, which is a through truck route restriction on Stage Road between Route thirty-three, Eltham Road, and New Kent Highway. Um, we're noticing a significant increase in tractor-trailer traffic, especially during the summer months when we see increased congestion on Interstate sixty-four. It appears that the GPS units are now directing, uh, vehicles off of sixty-four and kind of using Stage Road as a shortcut to get to New Kent Highway and head west. Um, and vice versa, vehicles heading east on New Kent Highway, GPS units are showing Stage Road as a cut-through to get to exit two-twenty. As we all know and familiar with, uh, Stage Road, Route six-twenty-seven, that road is not designed, uh, to accommodate tractor-trailers. It has sharp turns, um, and the road is just not equipped to handle that, that amount of weight as well. We've noticed areas in the road where you'll see unevenness and, and bulging in areas, uh, which we believe is, is due to the weight. Um, by adopting, uh, the resolution that you have before you, um, this resolution would be submitted to VDOT, who we've been working with hand in hand, uh, to establish the through truck route restriction.
Would, just, I, I guess a question, if we, the signs that say no through trucks, would that, is that what we're thinking about, just putting that up?
Yes.
The no-through truck sign?
Yes, sir.
On both ends?
Both ends.
And ignore GPS signs?
Well, I believe, I believe the locality would be responsible for the ignored GPS signs. I'm not sure if that's a sign that VDOT would install.
If everything's approved, DOD can get involved and, and that information will go out to the trucking companies to let them know it's a no-through truck. What is, the enforcement is the thing, that a local police would have to enforce it. If you see somebody cutting through, they have the right to, right to.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, my question becomes, would they report it to, like, the navigation? So, Mr. Vice Chair, my question becomes, would they report it to like the navigation companies?
I believe there is a process that that where information would be reported to the navigation companies. I'm not sure how that... That works, but yes, it would be reported.
And I'll piggyback on that. Can we find out how to do that? There's a lot of rerouting that needs to be done in the county. Stage Road's a perfect example, you know? I mean, I've seen trucks routed on Phil Bates Road with a wooden bridge.
Yes.
You know, it's... It's not just, you know, destroying... That's a private road.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it... It's dangerous. I mean, some, in some cases, Stage Road, you wouldn't want to meet a tractor-trailer if you just turned off Route thirty. So...
I can do some research. I'm not sure what that involves.
I don't know, is that a... Is that anything VDOT can help us with?
We're not involved in that.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it... It would be good for us to have a way of letting these companies know, you know, some of these roads are not designed for rerouting traffic, you know? Sort of like, I know the people that live along sixty hate to hear me say this, but sixty was designed to handle interstate-like traffic. Two forty-nine wasn't. So it's almost like, is there a way for us to, if something needs to be diverted, to put it on the better road? And I know that's not really it.
Well, we may be able to work through our own, um, GIS department, because I know as we add streets and we put that into our GIS system, that information is flowing up to the GPS units and post office and all that. So I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hathaway? If not... Mr. Lockwood? Were you getting ready? Okay.
No. Uh, I believe we have to... Yes, we have to do the public hearing.
This time, we'll open the public hearing for resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two.
Nobody has signed up.
Close the public hearing. Now we'll take a motion at this point.
Mr. Chairman? Or Mr. Vice Chair, excuse me. I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-two to approve a through truck restriction on Route six twenty-seven, Stage Road, between Eltham Road and New Kent Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Spears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye. And I would like to thank VDOT for helping us with this process.
Next on the agenda, item seven, resolution R dash thirty dash twenty-two, FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, budget amendment, Colonial Downs Revenue Appropriation, County Administrator Rodney Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you are aware, anytime we amend our budget by more than one percent, we're required to conduct a public hearing. Uh, today, we have a proposed budget amendment, not for this current fiscal year, but for the previous fiscal year. As we close out that fiscal year, um, we need to account for the revenue that we've received for Colonial Downs. Uh, that's what this motion and resolution does before you. Um, it appropriates, um, eleven million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-three cents, which is revenue received from Colonial Downs.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Um, anybody have any questions before we have the public hearing? Uh, at this time, I will open the public hearing for resolution R dash thirty dash twenty-two. And we'll close that public hearing. And we'll...
Mr. Chair... Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, if there's no other discussion or comments, revisions, um, I would first like to, um, thank Colonial Downs for being an excellent partner to, uh, New Kent County and surrounding communities. Um, and also, um, thank this board for the foresight and the vision to, um, place those funds in a, um... In a designated budget line item for our, uh, capital fund, which has helped us thus far fund many things that we didn't think that we would be able to do or would be delayed. And with that said, I move to adopt resolution R dash thirty dash twenty-two, amending FY twenty-twenty-one, dash twenty-twenty-two budget and appropriating revenue received from Colonial Downs to the capital fund.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Spears?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Item number eight, public hearing, resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-two, FY twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, budget amendment, federal ARPA state and local fiscal recovery funds and Colonial Downs revenue appropriations. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The resolution that you have before you, R dash thirty-one twenty-two, is for the amendment of this current fiscal year budget. So we're in a separate budget, uh, for the proposed item that you have before you. Um, we've taken several actions on several projects previously, capital projects, um, that are just beginning. And this is appropriating the funding, uh, for those projects. What this resolution does, it appropriates, uh, two million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars of funding that we have recently received, uh, from the federal government through the state local fiscal recovery funds, or many people call it CARES Act money. Um, and then the proposed motion appropriates this to our broadband expansion pros... Project, which we've recently assigned an agreement for. This is the second half of the funding from this federal source. Uh, we received the other half, um, last year for that. Um, this resolution also appropriates, um, eleven million, nine hundred thousand dollars from, um, general... From Colonial Downs revenues, uh, to the capital fund to fund... To also go towards the broadband expansion project. And this item does one more action. This resolution has one more action of appropriating, uh, two million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Colonial Downs revenue to cover the additional funds needed for the Fire Station Four project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway? All right, we'll open and close the public hearing then, if no one's signed up. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you.
That's all of our public...
That's all of our public hearings. Next on...
Oh, I got it. We need a motion.
Oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Oh, we haven't had a...
Oh.
We need a motion.
Somebody make one. Mr. Lockwood?
I move to adopt resolution R dash thirty-one dash twenty-two, amending the FY twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and appropriating revenue received from the federal ARPA state and local fiscal recovery funds and Colonial Downs to broadband extension... Expansion project and Fire Station Number Four construction projects as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Now, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Spears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Now, next on the agenda, the elected officials' reports. Ms. Spears?
Uh, Ms. Vice Chairman, I have nothing to comment on at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Lockwood?
Uh, Ms. Page told me not to say anything.
Ms. Page has a lot.
That's what she...
And I'll just go before Ms. Page. I just want to thank everybody that showed up yesterday in Colonial Downs for the, um, uh, Derby Days and, uh, um, thank Colonial Downs for their... Their efforts. And I'd also like to thank, um, Mr. Smalik and his department for all their hard work and setting that up and putting on such a great event. Ms. Page?
Um, first of all, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, it is, um, absolutely with, um, a sad heart that, um, in District Three, um, one of our, um, teachers and coaches and coach for... In the New Kent Public School System, Mr. Joe Crump, um, we ask that you keep his family lifted up in the, um... In the passing of his father on day before yesterday. Um, so anyway, he is absolutely an advocate and one of the winners for, um, the New Kent Education Foundation, uh, Bowl-a-thon. So we ask that you keep, uh, Coach Joe and his family lifted in prayer. Um, the other thing is, um, as we go about our daily lives, um, we think about, um, the things that we say and do in our actions, and I would hope that we would in this great county of New Kent. Um, it would be an ass. And it would be, um, biblical to love their neighbors theirself. Everybody has bill rights and they have First Amendment rights and they have the rights listed in the Constitution. Everybody has that. But we also have a firm responsibility to be kind. And when we are kind and we act out of kindness and love, then it makes the jobs of our fire and rescue, it makes the jobs of our sheriff's department, it makes the jobs of our county administrative staff and our board of supervisors work in harmony so that we can, um, absolutely strive toward having the best community and, um, not only the fastest-growing county in the Commonwealth, but a... The county where people want to come to, not just because it's rural, but because we are a county that understands the, um, the ethics and, um, morale, and we still hold close to that. Um, and then last but not least, we have the Little Free Pantry. It's located in front of our Human Resources, uh, building. And it seems as though the needs in New Kent are far greater than, um, our core team of, um, volunteers had even thought about. Um, so we are asking that, um, just take a little trip over there, non-perishable cleaning and pers... And toiletries, and just make a donation to that. Um, if you... On Facebook, you saw that one day it was full, the next day it was totally, totally empty. And so we hope that that is a need that is happening. And, um, so we ask everybody, if you feel like you want to feel all warm and fuzzy in a good community effort, that, um, you donate to our Little Free Pantry that's right across the field. And, Mr. Vice Chair, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And I'll add to what she just said, um, if you can, do something kind for somebody tomorrow. And every day. Next on the agenda, staff reports.
I would just like to announce and invite the public out to our annual nine-eleven ceremony. Um, September eleventh falls, I believe, on a Sunday this year. So we will be, um, honoring those that lost their lives during the attack on Friday, September ninth, at eight o'clock, on... In the front of the courthouse, our, our regular, normal location. So, um, it's going to be a brief ceremony this year, so please get there on time. Um, but we're looking forward to continuing, uh, that... That event.
So, any other... There's not many other departments here, really. Finance and, well, planning's going now. Um, any other business? All right. Uh, appointments? Anybody have any?
I knew you're not going to believe this, but I did.
Okay, Ms...
I don't have a last name. However, I will get it for you, Ms. Watkins. Um, I move to appoint Marcy as District Three Representative to the History Commission and serve a four-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. That's all I have.
Any other appointments? Ms. Spears, you have any?
No, sir.
Of any kind?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Spears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Anybody not delegated for our regional boards of commissioners? Well, that's it for our agenda this evening. We thank everybody for being here tonight, if you're listening on YouTube. We enjoy it. Um, and next meeting... All right, let's go to the meeting. It's Tuesday, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Six PM. And our next work session is September the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, both here in the boardroom in the county administration building. And I will entertain a motion.
So moved to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Spears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Meeting adjourned.